Alright, once you guys say it's good to go, I'll sign.
I'll do that tonight and then I'll send a text or whatever, not even ready for you.
I could swing by.
Okay.
Alright, just give it to Janelle and let her know when she's available for me to do it. Thanks, okay, no problem.
Oh, the box, one that you can see on the mound, I heard about it.
It's fifty-nine, we got, where's Gary? Is Gary not here? Gary say anything about not coming today?
No.
I didn't see anything.
I know Vish is not going to be here.
Yeah, he told me. Give us a second, we're, Robin, I'm gonna give Gary another minute or two before we start.
It's still six fifty-nine.
Six fifty-nine? Yeah, you're right, let's count another second or two. We still have a quandary, a quorum, so, there we go. Hey Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Good to go, Gary?
What's that?
You good to go?
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
We've been there with that already, so.
Well, good evening. Uh, we'll call the order, the December meeting of the Village of Cornwall Planning Board for December seventeenth at seven o'clock. Uh, Mr. Chautree will not be here tonight, but we still have a quorum, so we're good. Tonight, we have three items to take a look at. The first one is the approval of the minutes from, uh, October, and I'm asking for a motion to approve. Second? Second, everybody approve?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes have been approved from our last session. The main, uh, project that we have tonight is from the Storm King Associates, um, on the Storm King Theater, uh, that we have right downtown here. And this will be our first session with them, so we're looking forward to hearing kind of the big picture down to, you know, the, the site plan itself, as you, as you speak. I'd like to, uh, for the folks to introduce themselves, who's gonna present and who else is here to the, the board.
Ray Vinojani.
Hi, Ray.
Owner of the building.
Welcome.
Developer, my daughter Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, okay. Okay. If you would come on up to the podium and present, uh, the overview for us, and then we'll, we've got some questions.
I'll bring these a little closer so I can see them.
Sure. I know a lot of folks are looking forward to this project, it's, it's been, uh, something I think the town, the villages wanted to do for a long time.
So I just wanted to start with the history.
Sure.
Okay, so we can kind of see where we're, what we're starting with.
Alright.
So in August of nineteen thirty-four, the village board voted to-
I'm sorry, excuse me, are you, are you, are you all together, are you members of the public, or?
Members of the public.
Public, okay.
Yeah.
You want me to turn you sideways?
May- maybe just so everybody can see, if you don't mind.
So these two will go together here.
That's fine, that, that's good. Can you see those, if you want to sit on the other side?
That's how we can move.
Did a preview earlier.
Okay, you, you already checked?
Make sure you can see it, yeah.
Alright. I'll see what they, probably not.
Sorry.
Alright.
So I'll start over the, so nineteen thirty-four, the village board voted to approve the construction of this movie theater. It was a fireproof construction capable of seating between five and six hundred people, together with four small stores along Idowile. Excuse me, this was on the site of the library building and the lands adjacent there too, which is the park across the street. On July third nineteen thirty-five, the theater opened its doors at seven thirty. Will Rogers starring Doughty Thomas played to a packed house after a series of speakers and musical performances. State-of-the-art, fireproof, soundproof theater featured chillers in the basement that vented through the seats and through the art deco lights on the ceiling. The mezzanine has the projection room, concessions, bathrooms, and lounge area. Theater property included what is now the Village of Municipal Lot. In the late nineteen eighties, Joanne Grant, who ran the auction gallery, um, was the owner of the building. She struck a deal with the villagers, sell the property for a nominal amount, retaining the parking calculation to offset future uses of the building. So the building evolved, this was when it was completed, open to the public. This is kind of where it landed as a theater in the seventies, this is the best picture I had, I'm sorry. It kind of really, I don't know what they did to it, but.
Unfortunately, I remember the seventies, but, yeah.
Just to put it in context of the evolution, and then in nineteen ninety-seven, this is what I purchased. So the building was condemned, or being condemned because of the stones were falling, and in foreclosure, so we purchased the building. Always loved the building, didn't really know what to do with the building, but knew something we wanted to do. So that began this process for me and for Storm King Associates. So the initial plans for the building, we, we did the exterior restoration, and we did come to planning board in nineteen ninety-eight. We were, at that time, uh, the restaurant, we had a ballroom, uh, like an entertainment center that was going to be back into theater. Uh, we secured an approval on May nineteenth nineteen ninety-eight, it was two hundred fifteen occupancy. The restaurant was completed in ninety-nine, uh, but the ballroom lacked the funding to complete and never, never moved forward.
Mr. Vinojani, excuse me, so in nineteen ninety-eight, you said?
On May, yes.
So you got an approval, is there a site plan drawing from nineteen ninety?
There's no site, I mean, this, this is, we'll get to that in a moment.
Yeah, I'm curious.
This is, this is the as-built drawings, this was a, an existing building, we changed nothing on this site. So this is my plan, this is how it looked in nineteen ninety-eight. And so I submitted to the planning board along with the uses that we were proposing at that time.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
And the uses at that time, again, could you repeat those?
Restaurant, and we had the theater, we'd calling it a ballroom, because with the operator who was doing dancing and entertainment and other types of things. Uh, I have copies of the approvals, so I'll share with the board. So again, that was, they went through the whole hours occupancy. The restaurant did get completed in two thousand and opened, uh, again, the ballroom did not. Went back to planning board in two thousand and one to create a one-bedroom apartment on the mezzanine. We received approval on July seventeenth two thousand and one for that use, and it is currently a one-bedroom apartment. Two thousand and two, uh, we went back to planning board again to create what evolved from the ice cream stand to the deli to, for a takeout window on the side. And to install a door and a handicap bathroom in the upper theater. There's two levels to it, when Joanne Grant, uh, created the auction gallery, they framed the floor level. Um, so because of the slope, it has, had two levels. So that upper room, which exists, uh, was fitted out and it was tied to what was then Nikki's restaurant. Used it for various things, catering, entertainment. Uh, all of these, you know, went to planning, all received COs, all were operational. Most of the uses were updated over the years to what is the deli now, which went through the process as well. Brings us to where we are, so at this point, you know, we have Storm King Lounge, which leases the, uh, deli and the upper room. They're not utilizing the upper room now because it's in need of renovation, we're planning on, we have an application pending now for a second handicap bathroom, and we, we're going to basically just cosmetically clean the room up. It's already tied together, uh, we're not making any other changes until we have approvals. And then, uh, last year, my daughter Elizabeth applied, uh, for the New York Forward Grant, to create in the lower theater, uh, which is currently used as storage for a black box flexible use space. That will operate as a nonprofit capable of small live performances, movies, community events. So that'll bring us to the site. So this, a survey, which has been updated, Steve Graybeck did the original surveys.
Tilt that just a little bit, please, thank you. That's good, that's good enough.
The, the original surveys, when I purchased the property and throughout the years, but nothing on the exterior of the building has changed. The back lot is just the back lot. There was a couple of issues with our neighbor years ago with easements and things, which worked its way through planning, but didn't really change anything in the back lot. What we hope to do, to accomplish what we need for the black box for use of the lower room, which, I'm out of sequence a little bit, but I will. You can look at these two together, which gives you a better idea. The top being the existing conditions of the theater today. Storm King Lounge, the kitchen, bathrooms, the deli, and the upper room that I had mentioned before, we added the doorway when, uh, Nikki was in there. So this is kind of what we have there today. This lower room is just used for storage. These old theater exits, this used to go under the building and out to the street, it's, it's kind of walled off right now. This would be the primary egress and actual entrance for handicap accessibility, because this is a different level than the rest of the building. It's about five steps down from the restaurant, about three steps down from the upper room. So, a part of our renovation plan would be to probably to add a, a ramp or a lift internally, when there's a party or, or something that ties the two together. But we would create, or would like to create, you know, a sidewalk, which would eliminate the dumpster enclosures that are in the back. Kind of wrap the building. Uh, we will be raising this door about a foot. Cut this grade probably about a foot to get it to as close to current handicap standards as possible. I'm not sure I can get it dead flat, but I can get it very close. We'd like to create a couple of handicap parking spaces in the rear lot. This would be like a nice landscaped area, screening, the entrance coming in. And one of the concerns and issues we have, we've been trying to figure out how to facilitate the, this use, because there's so many things that, from seating, this is not, you know, this is not the number of seats. But the, the stage location, handicap bathroom, will be in this area. So we have to figure out, well, you're doing a movie, you have the seating, where does it go? You know, if you're doing a performance, this stage will be, our plan is to build the stage approximately eight feet deep, that'll be fixed with a movie screen behind it. Just as a point of reference, these two concrete, I guess new walls were, that was your original stage for the theater, the theater went front to back of the entire building. Interesting, because there's some trapdoors in the floor, and if you go into the sub-basement, the original basement, there's little dressing rooms and things down there that still exist. Not usable, but they still exist. So the theater became abbreviated when Joanne Grant sold the building, I believe, uh, name was Duranty's Restaurant opened for a period of time. And what they did, this area was still intact. When he came in, he kind of gutted everything, kind of modernized it, created a larger restaurant, and then pushed his kitchen and his bathrooms back to the theater stage. So kind of changed the dynamic of the building. So we've been working from that since then. But back to the exterior, you know, we had hoped to, we would like to wrap the entire building with a sidewalk, so the whole thing would flow. Uh, and this would become a handicap entrance landscaping, landscaping along the property line. But because of the storage needs, we would like to put a small garage in the corner. And this building will be used to house the trash as well. Because it's very hard to control the way it is right now, everything is everywhere. So we thought we could take the front section of the building, building's approximately twenty by twenty-eight, twenty-nine, two dumpsters, have it completely sealed off with a door. The center would just be an open garage bay area for, I guess, prepping things that are coming out of the theater, and then a little workshop here to make things as they need them with a storage loft above it. So that would, that would be as, an accessory use to the theater, not another tenant, not another.
Right.
So that, that's close to the property line, seven and a half feet to the back, five feet to the side. And, you know, again, our attention, there are some pines along here now, we would continue into the corner, wrap the building and bring it over. The interior, back to that one more. We're gonna make some minor changes to the interior layout. Lou from Storm King is going to operate, continue to operate the restaurant, and he's gonna use this room for profit events, you know, for, um, dinners, some entertainment. But we're gonna recreate this entrance, right now, it's kind of closed off, he go into the deli, it's all chopped up. So he would have access from here to be able to access this upper room. If there's a combined event, which we've discussed, you know, how we facilitate that, um, you'd be able to go both ways, you'd be able to come in here, down a ramp into the black box room, or out the back through the sidewalk that way, depending on the, the event and what was gonna be happening.
Mr. Vinojani, how, for the new theater portion, where would the customers for the theater portion, how would they enter the building?
So if it's a standalone event, because it is a nonprofit and they're, um, potentially, you know, could, space could be used for dance recitals, things that are not ticket generating?
I said theater, uh, but I understand what you're saying.
Saying is, so if, if it's a standalone event that isn't getting food service or any other, um, added anything from the rest of the building, you would enter from the sidewalk directly into the space.
So through the handicap?
Yes, that would be the, for, for a stand, for the purpose.
Standalone?
Yes, yes, a small event for, oh, you know, or if the room, I, I did, um, in two thousand and eleven, I did a similar room a- at the train station on the waterfront, and it was an incredible demand from all different uses, for room rentals, for different purposes. So, um, not a lot, you know, high occupancy.
Sure.
So those types of things would only be going through here, this would always be open as an egress, and the restaurant will be sealed off here and here. So if there's this small event here, you wouldn't be boxed in. And there's also a doorway, which would be closed for a small event, uh, that goes, that would go like behind the stage into the bathroom area of the restaurant. So there's three ways in or out of this space.
And they would be accessible to all those people that are in there?
Yes.
To be able to leave in an event of a fire or anything?
This will always be open, these two, the third, depending on the event and, because that's where you're going into actually the restaurant itself. So that, would have to be like a combined event where there were more people. So that, we have now, we've put a, we had, we had built this, added this bathroom when the ice cream stand and deli was built. We submitted an application to add a second bathroom in this space. Uh, this wall exists, this room exists now, it's just in disrepair. You know, part of it will be upg- upgrading, obviously, all the mechanicals, utilities, have to do a, you know, design for sound and lighting. So I guess at this point, you know, we're looking for some feedback and direction. You know, we have to make, kind of at this, our side, we have to make a decision, um, by January fifth, actually, on, on whether we can make this work with the state, you know, and the grant, the structure they have. So I, I haven't asked for an extension, but that's when they're asking for our sign, our sign-offs, not yours.
Sure.
They know that, um, some of this has to go through.
Sure, process.
Yes, process. I'm trying to feel, get a feel for what you think, what we, what threshold, what we're up against, and.
Okay. Well, any general questions by anyone before we start our, the board starts working through, Mr. Kamal?
Could you potentially have all of the occupancy doing a, an event at the same time? Like the restaurant, you know, full house, where the accessory use, then the deli operating, and it's, and a village event in, in the blockhouse?
It, it's possible, but not probable, because we are working together as a, they couldn't facilitate everybody. You know, the restaurant can't, couldn't service these rooms and the restaurant at the same time, the way it's equipped.
So there'll be a, a-
So we, you know, we'll, we'll have a occupancy maximum.
For the entire?
For the entire property.
Right, there's no deli operating at the same time.
No, the deli, and if I had, I'm not sure if I said that or not, so the deli will become a catering kitchen.
That's okay.
It just goes forward.
Okay.
So there will be no deli, it'll just be accessory use for the rooms.
And the kayak business, is that going away?
Yeah.
That's going away?
Yeah.
Because that's, that's stored in the back right now.
Yeah, that's a, there's a lot of kayaks back there.
Okay. Alright.
Can I?
Cool.
I, I have.
Sure, we, we've, we've got some questions, go ahead.
But this goes to your deadline, um, with the state. How, it's the New York, or a portion of the New York Forward Grant, is that correct?
Yes.
And is that through the Dormitory Authority or some other agency? Do we know?
It's not through.
It's E S D, right? Empire State Development?
Yes, it's, it, yeah, it's its own.
Empire State Development is the agency with the program? This is, this is my question. And I'll tell, I'll tell you my point, so we can-
Sure.
Get it out. So the, what I want to make sure, both for the board and for you, is that we notify the right agencies of what the board is propos- what the board is as far as secret purposes. I want to make sure that we notify the proper agency, because one, I wouldn't want this to happen, I wouldn't want you to go through, through the whole process here, and the board give you some kind of preliminary approval or something else. Uh, then you start to get permits, whatever it might be, and then the state say, well, you know, we never got notice of your planning board application, we didn't, we didn't review the plans, and the state say to you, sorry, uh, we're not gonna fund the project because of-
We presented it, you know, very coolly and plain English to them, as well as in a narrative.
Right.
Of how this process was going to proceed.
Okay.
Told them the current state of the building, what we're using it for now, um, and what we needed approvals for.
Okay.
So we were, we were very upfront, we didn't-
No, obvi- and obviously, you got some kind of preliminary approval for the grant, right?
Well, it's actually, we have the sign now for it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So anyway, my, my point is just this, for secret purposes, I want to make sure-
They're notified.
That, that they're notified.
Sure.
Because since they're going to fund a portion of this through the grant, they're also an involved agency. We're an involved agency, they're an involved agency, I want to go through all the proper notification procedures to make sure that they are notified, so we don't have, we, we collectively, so to speak, and the village, because this is part of the New York Forward Grant. You know, you're a stakeholder, the village is a stakeholder, the town's a stakeholder, there's a, you know, there's a lot, you know, riding on this collectively, so. So when we get to it, I have some recommendations as to how the board should handle its secret review. I'd love to get at least some of the information for-
You have the whole file, how's that?
We have the whole file. We have the whole file, person.
I have the letter.
Okay.
His name, sorry.
Is this, is this a copy for us, or is this?
Yeah, I just printed it out, so.
Oh, okay, great, alright, so we'll-
Well, thank you.
And then, someone correct me, as to the parking, from the prior approvals, were there a designated number of spaces, like what the kayaks are now?
So what, there's no onsite parking at all.
Right.
So when Joanne Grant ran the auction gallery, she was owner of this building and the lot across the street. She sold the parking lot to the village for a nominal amount, the low market, and there was an agreement that those spaces aren't owned by the theater, but would be part of the allocation for future uses. Now, that's before my time.
Mine too. We have that in writing?
Well, let me continue, yeah, so when I went to planning in ninety-eight, that was a known. Uh, when I went back, I went back in the mid-two thousands, we were toying with something like this at the time. And the board raised the issue again. So I did some research, I could not, there was no written document, so Howard Proter was the attorney at the time for the village. I went back, I went to the village board, and Howard was part of that whole transaction. And I've been trying to, and I should have copied him at the time, I'm trying to remember the dates, the copies of the minutes, but, um, that was entered into the village board minutes, that, that agreement, when the property was sold, was part of that transaction. But for whatever reason, whether Joanne Grant, whoever the attorneys were, you know, never formalized it on deed or anything in writing. Um, so he did, and they did put it into the minutes, kind of memorandum of understanding. And it's, it's part of the calculation, let, let me restate that, I try to remember the words exactly, that giving those spaces up, you know, would not hinder the ability of this, this to go forward, you know, with something-
Sure.
Some legal language.
Yeah, and that's fine, that's kind of, that's exactly-
The zoning board getting involved at all? Your co- the zoning board, did they get involved in granting a variance for not providing parking?
No, I, I thought the C V S, I mean, at the C V S at that time, it was discretionary, because, I mean, the buildings on Main Street don't have parking lots. But I don't know if it's changed since then, but.
Now, with the parking being provided in this municipal lot, when you have an event there, or those parking spaces are gonna, a number of those parking spaces are gonna be reserved?
No.
So the general public can't party there?
First come, first served.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you check recently with the village clerk, you, you did go through the building department files?
I did speak to, um, the mayor and, and to Jim Kane, and he was gonna try to do some research for me.
Okay.
For the minutes or the memorandum?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and may, have you had that discussion with the clerk yourself, or made a-
No, I haven't, I haven't.
Maybe just make a FOIA request, just, just to, to try, because that's, it's one of the first, two, two real concerns I have. Your, your funding, make sure we get that noticed properly, and two, the parking. And I've heard about this agreement, but never seen it, I've been here fifteen years.
But it doesn't exist, that's why I'm saying, I went to the board and-
But if it's in the minutes, but if it's in the minute, so, so there's nothing that, when you, when you have your deed from the prior seller, there's no reservation of rights or anything? There's no reservation of rights or anything, well, actually would be. Okay, alright, we, we need to do a little, we need to do diligence on that issue. But if we can get the minutes or we trace those deeds through, see if there was a reservation of rights, it seems to me that when the, when the. Prior owner deeded the lot to the village, there would, uh, there would have been a contract that somebody would have saved, that would have had those things in it. Or some kind of a reservation in the deed that reflected what you're saying now.
Do you have a relationship with Howard? I mean, he was part of that whole process.
I can call him unless he's got it in his basement, I don't know.
I mean, I'm giving you.
Sure.
My interpretation of what I've been told by many people throughout the years of owning the building.
Yeah, you know, I.
And it only came up, um, it didn't even come up on the first couple of planning board applications. It only came up with the latter one where they raised the question, and then I, then I started to do the research.
Right.
And that's when, um, I did reach out to Howard, you know, and I went to these, the village board, and I s-. Asked the questions. And he, at that time, was, you know, the attorney and he was at memory of it.
Familiar of, with it, right, okay.
And no one, I, I certainly don't, because I wasn't around, but you know, he doesn't know why it never was part of the documents.
But if, if there's something in the minutes.
But part of it would be looking at the building, the way Joanne Grant left it, it gives you some kind of idea where her mindset was, you know, so.
It seems like there's some record, we just have to find it.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
It's saying that there was no parking requirement on the site itself at all, there was no parking spaces designated in the back lot where you're gonna do the accessory structure.
Yes.
Except for those two, now you're recommending a handicap, the two.
I may add those two now.
Okay. Um, okay. Kristen, thank you very much.
Sure.
Uh, we, we just, the board has some questions for you, and we'll, we'll just kinda walk through them and, and discuss them.
So you're not making any changes to the exterior, exterior as far as like the building materials that are up there now? Um, do you know, um, do you anticipate how many variances you're gonna need from the zoning board of appeals at this point? Cause it looks like there's a height restriction that applies, um.
This is for the garage?
For the garage.
With, yeah, the accessory structure, yeah.
Okay. And then, um. Are you adding more pavement in that back area when you're putting in the parking lots?
Some scattered pavement, concrete everywhere back there, that's all gonna come out. This is all concrete, you walk away, and this will be pavement, these, these two spaces and the handicap slation area. So this will remain gravel.
That's macadam right there, macadam, right, that's the gravel.
Gravel, yeah.
Okay.
Are there any water or drainage issues back there now?
Gary?
How's the sidewalk on Churchill, how's that going to affect the street?
Um, this area is.
Cause that, cause it's, it's a very narrow street, so.
Yeah, this area currently is, um, like gravel.
Okay.
It's probably, um, it's not gonna be a very wide sidewalk, it might be thirty-six inches, forty-two inches.
That's on Churchill?
Yeah.
So just so you're aware, maybe what you wanna do is contact Dave Howvers.
Sure.
Only because right now, before the board, there's, um, they're trying to, lack of a better term, tweak the no parking on Churchill. Cause it's very narrow.
Yeah.
You do have, you know, restaurants and stuff, so. Um, I don't know, so how, does the gravel come out a certain distance to, to the road now?
Yes.
That, okay, so it's presumably.
But you know, that, that's not, that, that's something I thought would be a nice addition, it's not something that.
Right.
You know, n- needs, it's not integral, integral part of the plan, it's something that would kind of make it nice just to walk around.
Yeah, with your.
Plus if you're handicapped, you wanna go around and.
Well, you could be able to park back here.
You can park, yeah.
Anyway, just, just to.
Okay.
Sure. I assume that, you know, this would go to D P W, you know, before any of that happens.
It will.
It needs to go to everybody, yeah.
But the reason I mention is they're, they have a public hearing on it now, that, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, thank you.
And what is that, Joe, that they're doing the public, to, it's currently no parking and they're changing it, or considering?
Right. The parking on Churchill's flip-flopped a couple of times over the years. So they tried to make a change to improve it a couple of years ago, doesn't seem to have worked. So the board initially thought that they would rescind the prior no parking on Churchill. But the residents came out and they, they're trying to explain that that's, that's not gonna help either, so. There, there's supposed to be a site meeting and we have to figure, but it's.
It's in flux.
You know, they're not gonna do it next week, they, they gotta figure it out, but they're trying to address, it's very narrow, so they're trying to address. How to accommodate people's driveways, create or keep as many parking spaces as possible. It's kind of like a little jigsaw puzzle going up and down Churchill.
Alright.
Gary, any other questions?
Uh, I think the, uh, the big question, uh, raised tonight. Uh, i- is the, the one that concerns me the most, and that is about parking. And, and until we get a successful conclusion to, uh, contact with agencies involved in that decision-making. Uh, I don't know where we're going with the rest of this. That's just so paramount for me anyway.
For the non-for-profit, that's kind of very a crowd, how, how many are we expecting out of events, or?
We have a maximum ninety-nine, sorry, ninety-nine occupancy, that's what, uh.
No, events, how many are events?
I'm just saying, size-wise.
Okay.
So, I mean, framing it, the original theater was designed for six hundred people.
Okay.
And we're capping at ninety-nine. Um, most of the events are gonna be smaller events, um, movies and things, I'm sure are gonna be very limited.
Right.
Um, it's not gonna be hundreds of people.
So at best, let's call it like a hundred, that's an addition of fifty cars we're gonna have in the area for like a couple of hours, at, at best.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now, um, we run a lot of the community events, do, for all, have some special events, and I'm a member of that community. And a lot of the events that are held are so localized where it is individuals that are walking. From homeland or from the lower village to wherever we're hosting the events, whether it's down the river, in the summertime at the movies. With the movies, or, you know, the holiday stuff that we're hosting right now. It's pretty surprising, um, and kind of lovely, to be honest. Um, so I imagine that the types of events that we will host inside. Will attract the same types of people, because the same team that is involved in that is likely going to be the same team that is involved in generating those community events.
Okay.
So I wanna back up a little bit. So in the interest of time, which is critical. It seems like that the storage building is probably the biggest hurdle to overcome at this point. Because of the variance it would require versus the existing building shell. So what I'll probably do is rem- remove that, it's not a contingency on our grant. It's something I feel we need to function, but I can figure out something else in the interim. I think it's more important that I move forward with this part of the plan. And whatever the board feels is reasonable for our proposed. Uh, access and sidewalks and things and parking that we'll work on. So I, I don't wanna create, um, a hurdle, unnecessary hurdle.
Sure.
I can revisit that at a later date.
Yeah.
Sure.
You know, that, because it's not listed on the grant application.
Right.
It's something that came up while we were trying to figure out, how do we run this? You know, where do we put our stuff, like right now, like even those nutcrackers, you have no idea, you know, how much space they take.
Sure.
So I'm actually buying enclosed trailers to start putting our stuff in and taking it, bringing it, storing it, because there's no.
Sure.
No reasonable way to do this.
Well, let me, before, before we go down that road, let me, let me just ask, uh, Mr. McKay, a question about the variance would go to the Z B A, correct?
We're talking about the height.
The height.
Talking about the garage, yeah.
Yeah, the garage, so.
For the garage. And how long would that take if it went to the Z B A?
Well, we'd have to complete our seeker process.
We have to complete the seeker first, which is my point I was gonna get to.
And then refer to the Z B A, unless, but it's only about a foot and a half, we're so variance, is that?
It's two feet, I think.
Is it just the height, not the side yard or the rear yard?
The side yard, I don't wanna overstep my.
The setbacks are.
That could be said, the side yard could be said by the planning.
Yeah, this, we, we could look at the setbacks.
So if I simply reduce the height by two feet, we eliminate the problem, is that what we're saying?
If it's seventeen and a half, you don't have a problem.
So you consider that done.
And, and the reason why I was, was gonna say, hold on a minute, is because to do this, we do have to go through the seeker process. And we're gonna need from you an E A F. The short form.
Yeah.
We could list it unlisted initially.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be a type one.
Yeah.
It could be a type two, I don't know, we haven't done the, the A F yet, but that takes time, so that's what I was gonna offer you. There is some time in there that you could work other things, like the parking, cause we're gonna really need to know the impact to the community. Cause what, the community's gonna ask, what's the impact, and, and we gotta kinda know that. And if, if we could get the, the minutes and show, okay, you're covered for this many, but what do you think is the total? Those sorts of things, that's kinda what we're looking for.
I'm gonna give you the prior approvals too, because our calculations done at that time. There are more, but these are the key ones, so. So I think that this was done by the inspector at the time. And I'm not sure.
So lay out the total requirement and then?
Yeah, it does, it does, that's for a hundred, it was two hundred and ten maximum, he averaged it at one sixty, and he spread it out.
Okay, we'll take a look at it, can, can we have a copy of this?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
So just.
And there's the, the funding folder.
Funding folder, put all this together.
Put it together.
Folks can take a look at it, okay? Um, I do have a couple of other questions, and do you have any more? Okay, a couple of, you mentioned that the back area is gonna be, could be the main entrance for a lot of events. Um, I don't see any lighting, I see two lights, lamps on the building, um, but I don't see lighting there, is there a lighting plan or?
There will be, basically what I plan to do, this is the staircase going down to the, to the lower basement. I plan on, this is a fence which is going to be.
What does that make?
A decorative screen.
Decorative screen.
Plan on doing is like creating each one, and we wanted to take it through the years with the movies. So each panel will have maybe two movies, starting with when it opened in nineteen thirty-five. As you walk through, this is gonna screen, there's a, um, electrical, something here.
Right.
This'll, this'll screen that whole area coming in, I was gonna put pathway lights on, on the fences, so it's not.
So at night, when, like right now, they'd leave and it's dark.
You'd be able to, your pathway would be lit all the way.
And the posters will be illuminated as well.
I'm sorry?
And the posters will be illuminated.
Yeah.
Oh.
Backlit, yeah.
I got it.
Yeah.
So the, the, could you show us some sort of plan on that, that's, I'd like to see the lighting plan.
That's why, you know, I knew this is not a final.
No, no, understand, good.
I wanted to get input before going. And then again, as I said, as this comes around, we widened it up, we're gonna have a little landscaping here and here. Um, Lou has access to the back of his restaurant through here. Um, and the sidewalk would connect, so you'd be able to get out that way as well, so.
Okay. Um, the building itself, I noticed you say, material selected by contractor. Um, ca- I'm a little concerned, what is he gonna select, you know, I mean?
Well, the contractors.
So I, I would really like to, to hear a little bit more about, I, I.
No, no, we'll, we'll do.
The basic design looks like it fits into Cornwall, but, you know.
This is a reasonable request, that's what I needed to know, and it seems reasonable. Then when I come back, I'll have a rendering done with colors, and I'll spec out all the materials.
The, the materials.
Yeah, so we planned on doing hardy board, you know, make it.
That'd be great.
I, I would like it to look like it's been there as long as the building's been there.
It fits right in, right in with the theater.
Yeah.
Okay. That'd be perfect.
And this, this will be facing the road, and this is the garbage area, so.
Check. Okay. Um.
Sorry, those.
Go ahead.
They look like, like garage doors, correct? And, okay, and that's what faces the road, those, okay.
And then that way the truck can pull up, open the door.
And that's on River Road?
This is gonna go all the way in the back corner, is that River?
Churchill, it's facing Churchill, right?
Churchill, yeah. All the way back.
Okay.
Yep.
What kind of trucks?
They're just sitting, they're just sitting, excuse me?
You said trucks, what's called, uh, Churchill, okay, good, alright.
Yeah, garbage trucks.
I thought you meant like big delivery trucks, I'm like Churchill is tiny.
The trees that you're, you're putting as the barrier where the setback is on, on the, that, those are existing. And then what type of tree will you put down on the?
We'll continue with the pines here, and then we'll go to a smaller, like an Arborvitie style here, all the landscape design done as well to show the plantings.
Okay. That would be great. Um, okay. Mr. McKay, do you have, can you talk a little bit about the way ahead, you know, as far as.
Yes.
Where do we need to go on some things?
Yes.
Process-wise.
Right.
Go ahead.
Just wanna take a step back first.
Sure.
The, you're gonna create two or three handicap spaces?
I think there's room for two, you could possibly get a third. Um, I di- I just wanted to, I guess you could, because this, this area, obviously the cars are not gonna park, you just, we'd have, have to keep it open. When the garbage, waste, or the garbage truck came, that's all.
Right, so the, so the garage, we get exterior, is gonna be sent back into that corner.
Correct.
So then you have to leave that open for access, and you think you can still get two minutes?
I definitely can get two, there's probably three, you know.
So there's no sidewalk there now, it's just a ground, right?
It's a piece of concrete, I don't even know who's there for the years.
You're talking on Churchill?
Yeah, so on, on the lot.
There's, there's no, there's no drive, park.
Oh, on Churchill, no, there is nothing.
No, I've walked.
I thought you meant my lot.
But if you're gonna put in the sidewalk, are you gonna need a curb cut, driveway cut?
No, the sidewalk ends here, see it wraps? So if for any reason, you know, D P W doesn't want a sidewalk here, then this sidewalk would start here. Right, it would start here, next to the handicap, and run to the building, that way.
Manny, when will, uh, the D P W and the water department, uh, get a copy of these, these drawings?
We determined that, when she was the board, determined that he has a complete application.
Okay. Alright.
With your okay, I would take it upon myself, meet with Dave and have a conversation.
Sure.
Cause I'm, I'm of the belief that.
Fix it ahead of time.
I wanna forego it in designing, you know, he says, hey, this is not gonna work, or why don't you do this? I wanna do what you guys want, and he wants to take the path of least resistance, I mean, it's, if, if it's okay, I'd like to, I'll do it myself, you know?
I don't have a problem if you talk to him.
Is that okay with you, man? Yeah, that's fine, okay.
That's fine. Um. Okay. Mr. McKay? Some legal processes, is good or?
So. My preference is, at least preliminarily, for the board to designate this as an unlisted action. What that would do is we could then coordinate this with any other involved agencies, which would be the funding agency. My strong belief is that, once we notify that agency, that we have the application, you'll probably do it separately, but I'm talking specifically under the seeker process. They're not gonna want, they just wanna fund it, they want this board to handle it, they're not gonna be the lead agent, agency, it's not gonna happen, but. It's an important step to at least notify them, so that the seeker process is being completed properly. We must get that E A F from you, the short form E A F, as soon as possible, because. We need to essentially be able to refer, take that E A F, copy of the plans that you provided. And, and circulate to other agencies and say, we received these plans, they're on file. Um, you can view them, and you need to let us know, and they have thirty days to do this, thirty days to let us know. Whether or not they're gonna be the lead agency. We kind of missed, because we don't have the E A F, we had one. We kind of missed, because we don't have the EAF, we had one before this meeting, the board could've taken that action tonight, but they don't. So, as soon as we can, we get that, at the next meeting, the board can, can adopt a resolution to declare itself.
Lead agent, prefer for lead, really.
To, to circulate for lead agency status and get all of those things out.
Cause that's a time, that's, that's what, you know, when you're starting to be practical about the timeframes, and you, I know you, you talked about five January, I'm like, well, we got secret.
No, 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 like I said, just need to get a feeling.
We just wanna get the timelines, because after that, um, public hearing.
Well, with that, if we do that and you reduce the height of the building, then there's no referral to ZBA, everything stays here.
One more thing, I'd like to add for the, for what the ZBA, we need to do with the calculation of the percentage of the accessory building in floor area compared to the main building, make sure that doesn't exceed ten percent. So if it does, right now, the building is about five hundred and sixty square feet.
Yes, I am close.
Probably not, but we need it in writing so we can demonstrate that we comply with that. Because you're about five hundred and sixty square feet, they, they call it about four hundred square feet, or about ten percent.
Understood.
Okay.
Just demonstrate that, and cover that. And then some drainage calculation also for the site.
Cause you're changing the site, you know, as far as with the building, et cetera, we just wanna make sure it doesn't impact any of the neighbors.
Understood.
So.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah, so once we get, once we get the AAF, we'll have the AAF and the applications, we can refer to the other agencies. That'll take at least thirty days, right, so we're into presumably sometime in February. What we wanna do, though, if we can at the next, uh, meeting, it also require, requires a referral to Orange County Planning. Uh, cause it's within five hundred feet of two eighteen.
Right.
So that's, that's another process, we have to get that to the county, the county gets at least thirty days to provide their comments to us. It seems like we can eliminate the referral to the ZBA. There was some discussion about whether or not some particular items should be referred to village engineer for comment, or can decide whether or not it wants to do that.
Take a look at, when you provide the drainage, storm drainage, we'll probably have the engineer take a look at that, after you provide it.
That's essentially my procedural comments for now, so if we get all those things, once we get all the county comments back, we make sure that we're gonna be the lead agency, we can designate ourselves at that point. We'll have the input from the other agencies, and then you can follow the village code provisions from there forth.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carmona, any other questions, comments, et cetera?
No, that's it, the, the time we discuss, if you provide that, I think that'll put us in a good place to take a really low, low look at it at the project and be able to move forward.
And of course, the parking information, whatever you.
Yeah, the parking is important. So does any other board members have any other questions or comments? This has been very helpful.
Will we get copies of the, of the information that, uh, McKay is providing to us to the entire board?
Sure.
Yeah, that, that's the point.
We, we could get, uh, Janelle to make copies, so we, you can pick it up, we'll, we'll get that. Good point. You're also, the application that we have, there are, there are some other things in here that you may wanna just take a look at as you're going through, to make sure that you've covered those uh, and can answer those questions when you come back, okay?
Signs, we didn't talk about signs.
Right, signs and those other things, I just wanna make sure that it's not little stuff, you've, you've got it, you've, you've covered it, okay? Um, I really look forward to this, that you're gonna design. And just work with the, the code enforcement officer as far as getting ready for the January session. Okay, any other questions of us? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Okay, the next, uh, item that I'd like to, uh, take a look at is to review and approve the, uh, attached planning board dates for twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion? Any issues?
No, I, they look fine.
A motion?
Motion.
Anybody second?
I'll second.
Very second? And approve? Alright, good, so planning board notes were good for the meetings? Some closing comments, alright, for the team. It looks like in January, we will probably get the Shore Road project, alright? There's really two key things that I'd like you to, uh, take a look at and encourage you to do. One is the view preservation, uh, requirements, district requirements. And if you take a look at Article fourteen, it's very specific in there about what our duties are, it's on the zoning, general provisions, one, seven, two, seven, three. It's about four pages. I would encourage members to go up above the Shore project and take a look at those views. Okay, I mean, there's West Street, there's Andrews Street, there's, there's Braden and Spruce.
So I try to go.
From public area, just, just.
So you gotta go up there by Andrews to take a look down?
Yes, and look down, cause that's the view preservation, so you know, there, there's a, there's a deep slope, you know, that kinda goes down, and then that's where they're gonna put the homes.
From where, from Andrews?
From the Shore project.
But a shore project, but if we're going up.
If you're going, you're gonna sit up higher than them, but you wanna be able to look from a public view and be able to see, and we shouldn't see, there should be a capable way to see the river and not houses.
Okay.
Okay, that's the deal, and they know that, they, they only could go thirty-five feet high, and we've asked them for view, uh, preservation analysis, remember, that was what we asked for last time, so they're gonna be doing that. Um, so we wanna make sure they do that. The other thing is, I believe the village board has approved the new tree preservation law. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. McKay?
Yes.
Uh, so that is very important for this project, cause there's gonna be a lot of trees involved in this project. So I wanna make sure everybody feels comfortable with tree preservation, view preservation, uh, and then obviously the other things that we'll go through. We will have the engineer take a hard look at this project, uh, because it's a huge development. And we wanna make sure the engineer, Jason's involved, and we'll do that, as soon as we get something, but Manny has to get something here soon, um, and then he's gotta make, feel comfortable that the application's complete. So it, it may be January, it could be February, I don't know, depends on what they do. Let's see. Everybody knows the next session is the twenty-first of January at seven o'clock? And what I really do wanna wish is everyone a happy holiday and thanks for what you do for the village. It's important business what we're trying to do, we're trying to preserve a lot of things in the small village we have with the theater, and we're also trying to provide some housing, but do it right for housing when it's coming up, and I appreciate all your thoughts. Any further comments or thoughts from anyone? Mr. McKay? Any? Mr. Carmona?
About the dates for the meetings, the way we had it in the past, we had the meeting day, like you said, January twenty-first, I think is the next one.
Yes.
Uh, and then we had a deadline for submission. That I brought, I, I.
You haven't done that yet, right?
I'm taking that away because it's creating problems. People submitting application on the last day at the last minute, that doesn't give me enough time to review the application to make sure it's complete. Most of the time it's not, now I gotta give it back to the applicant, but they feel they should be at the meeting, but they submitted it on time. The way I wanna do it is submit your application, we'll review it, once it's complete, then we'll get you on the next.
Then you get it on, on the next meeting?
The next, whenever that may be, not, because you submitted it on time, now you gotta go on to the next meeting.
Okay, board members, any comments?
Yeah, that's fair.
Good.
Good, okay, good. Uh, thank you, Manny.
Well, I do have a question, is there a certain amount of time that you need to review it?
All depends on the application, like this one coming up next month with two sixty-one Shore Road, I mean, it's undetermined, it's complicated, it's too much review, depends what they provide to me. I can't anticipate, I can't advocate for them, they have to advocate for themselves. So it's, it's all depends on the application, like this one maybe less, but that, that one for sixty-one Shore Road is thirty pages, so imagine how long that took me to put that together.
Yeah.
So, it's not that simple. So depends on the project, that's why I know that one, you submit it, once it's, I do review it immediately when they come in, I don't ever sit there, but some things more than nothing, I do gotta give them back most of the time.
Alright, thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
And a Merry Christmas.
And a Merry Christmas? Alright, good, thank you very much.
And good night.
Have a great holiday. Good meeting.